All right. Good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Boardwork Session for Wednesday, March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. It's nine oh one A M. My name is Time Answer, Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair, Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Commissioner Gary Edwards. We have Commissioner Mahia on Zoom, and Commissioner Claus will be joining us shortly. For public virtual attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube Channel. We're here till three, uh, for three hours, if needed, to cover, um, two different topics. First up on the agenda is a budget update. We have budget staff here, so I'll let the interim county manager set us up.
Yes, uh, good morning, Commissioners. Um, we are going to start with the budget update, and I'm just going to turn this straight to Nicole, and I'll be jumping in here and there, so go ahead.
So, good morning, Commissioners. Nicole Martinez, Budget and Fiscal Manager. I'd just like to take the opportunity to introduce my team here. We have a new staff member, so if you wouldn't mind.
Uh, Daliani Stali Alfonseca. I'm the Senior Management Analyst.
Jennifer Smith, I'm not new.
I want to get your name right, though. I didn't quite get it.
Uh, Dolly?
Dolly.
Yes.
Dolly, okay.
She's been here.
D A H L I, not D O L L Y.
D A I L I.
D A I L I.
I, uh, okay.
Today's day three for her, so just wanted to break her in just the right way, right? Nice and proper. So, we're here today to talk about the general fund as far as budget updates. We want to talk about closing two thousand and twenty-three officially in our accounting system. The year has not closed. It's looking to close sometime this week. But I do have some actuals to date. There are only a few more pending transactions that would hit the general fund. I've spoken with financial services. So I want to share that with you, as well as share with you the ending sales tax for two thousand and twenty-three, where it came in compared to what we had estimated during the budget process. And then jump into January and February sales tax. Um, before I start going into the sheets that I've sent you, I'd like to share with you what's on our budget website and what our budget team has been able to put together as far as sales tax. So I'm going to share our screen and just, um, let you see that for a moment. So, um, on the Thurston County website, there is underneath elected officials, um, Board of County Commissioners, there is a Budget Office homepage. The addition to this homepage, um, that I'd like to share with you is this link here for reports, studies, and plans. So this is new as of a couple of weeks. Um, on this page here, there is a link to our biannual budget, so all of our past budget books. But the one thing I'd like to highlight here is this new section for sales and use tax reports. As of right now, we have general fund sales tax reports on the website, so you can do this dropdown here for two thousand and twenty-three. And per month, you can see all of the general fund sales tax reports that the county has been, um, previewed to, and then also two thousand and twenty-four.
Now, what?
Uh, yeah.
What page is that, if you go?
Under the Commissioner's Office Budget Office homepage.
Commissioner's Budget Office, Budget Office homepage, and the link is Report Studies and Plans. So with the help of the P I O office, we were able to get this website up and running, this link here, so I just want to say thank you to Megan and her team. And also, I'd like to show this, try our interactive tools. So we have an interactive general fund sales, uh, sales and use tax tool. And, um, we have a new employee. His name is John Hunter, and he's over our performance measures, and he was able to put up this Power B I here. That's very interactive. So it starts, um, in our normal sales tax reports on the first page, we have this graph here. Um, it is going all the way back to two thousand and eight to two thousand and twenty-four, so it is our sales tax, general fund, sales tax collections by month.
That report is in your packet.
And that report is in your packet, yes.
It's also on the website.
But it's also on the website, and the great thing about the website is that you can change this date here. Um, so say you want it since it's through February first, two thousand and twenty-four, you could do just two thousand and twenty-three. And then you can get a more in-depth look at the changes, um, per month there, instead of that one sheet that you have that is a lot of data in a small section. So this is very interactive that way. You can click here and click January. You can get an update here. This word changes. As far as what the change for sales tax over was month over month and year over year. And so this is your sales tax by dollar amount. This is your change by, um, month here. And then you can go to the next page, and this would be the second page of your report that you have before you, where it also gives you your top ten categories of sales tax collections. It has a word here by the month that you pick, as well as, um, this category listing here. And then this is the Thurston County compared to Washington State year-over-year growth. So just wanted to show that this is interactive tool on our website. We're trying to be more transparent and be able to let, um, the citizens see what we're doing, what information we're getting as far as sales tax that are being used to forecast in the future. So I'll stop sharing that unless there's any questions. Yeah.
Can you show, um, going back to the main tab where it showed the, I want to see one of the reports that, that the public would see if they actually clicked one of the sales tax reports. You said it's like what we see, but we see several different things, so I'm just curious.
Let me stop sharing so that I can see sometimes.
Is that what it looks like? Okay.
Yeah.
Totally. And it's pretty extensive.
I'll bring back up my share. Excuse me.
That's what I figured it was, but...
When it shares on the one screen, it like blocks your looks. Sorry about that delay.
So like, just like one of those reports, yeah?
Yep, so... So this report here in PDF. So you can just see this interactively on our tool, or you can pull up the PDF by month to see the information that we have as far as general fund sales tax. So this is a report that is in your packet. This is the January report.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for Nicole on that piece?
Uh, I, yes, I guess so. So, on that one, I think it was blocked by part of, uh, the screen sharing process. So, in at the far right on that, it shows, uh, below the line here.
Let's get into the details now.
So yeah, now we're going to get into the details. I just wanted to show you the website.
She opened with the splashy cool thing, but now we're going to get into the meat of the conversation.
Okay, so you're, you're going there.
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So I'd like to start with, um, the general fund status report. It looks like this. I can share the screen if we think it would be important, but I'll just dive right into it. And so in this general fund status report, this is for two thousand and twenty-three year-to-date, so, um, these are actuals to date. And as I mentioned a little bit earlier, we've gotten information from financial services that the year is not officially closed yet. However, there are just small pending transactions that won't greatly impact what, um, the ending fund balance is projected here. Um, but what we can note here is, I'd like to just start very high level, is that our ending fund balance is higher than what it is that we anticipated at, um, budget development. And the main reason for that is a huge increase in our reversions.
In what?
Reversions. The, the amount that people didn't spend.
Right. So, uh, based on, um, financial plans that were received from departments who have, um, appropriation in general fund through August, the end of August thirty-first. Um, that's the information we use to build off of our budget to develop. Um, it was estimated that six million dollars would be reverted, and as you can see on your sheet, that there's actually eight point nine million dollars that's going to be reverted. So that substantially impacted what our beginning fund balance to tune of four million dollars more in our ending fund balance than anticipated.
But even if it wasn't for that, we would have had more money.
Um, no. So our revenues, which I will get into now, especially our sales tax came in the way that we had predicted. So we were saying that it was flat growth and that we were not going to see anything more than one to two percent in our sales tax growth, and that is what has happened. Um, our sales tax came in, um, for two thousand and twenty-three at one point five percent growth over the year before. So the reason for our increased fund balance is due to reversions and not changes in what we predicted for, um, revenues into the county for general fund.
That's actually below, right? Because we were, we were looking at like two point three, two point four.
Right.
So to come in at one point five means something must have gone bad at the end of the year.
As far as?
Sales tax revenue. Uh, to drop us for the year down to one point five. Because weren't, weren't we talking about two point three or four? And that was flat?
I'm not sure at one point five. Oh, I hear you're saying, so we were, no, we were predicting one to two percent, and so we're at one point five. So I would say that not necessarily something went bad, but that our prediction was right along that it was going to be flat. Is that right, sir?
Right, and the, um, financial plans that I just handed out allow you to compare, um, where we were in December, uh, when the board was making the final budget decisions, um, to where we are today. Uh, the...
Because the project, I mean, what I'm remembering is the projection was like five percent. But then, as we tracked through the year, it was like, oh, we're only getting like two point three or two point four, which is not below, quite a bit below projection. This is the first time I'm hearing it at one point five, which, you know, I'm not questioning it. I'm just saying that that means it continues to tail.
At the end, we were saying it's going to be, we were hoping for two, and where we actually landed was one and a half.
If I may, when we built the two thousand and twenty-three budget, we had projected that it would be five percent over the year before as far as sales tax. As the year went along, we realized that we were not going to get five percent over the year before because of the changes in the economy, and we backed down that to about two percent, and we ended up at one point five percent.
Right. So, so we ended at even less than, and as you can see on this graph, in the column that looks kinda, what color would you call that? Tan?
Sam, and I can go with Sam.
Yeah, it's an odd color that the printer's been out. Um, anyway, we were predicting in December that sales tax would finally come in at twenty-six million, six eighteen, and where we actually landed, uh, was twenty-six million, four hundred. So just a little less than where we were predicting at the time the board adopted the budget. And the, the big change, uh, that you'll see is property tax. That's more concerning than the sales tax. Property tax, in the end, um, we were predicting would come in at, uh, forty-five point seven million, and the actual amount of property tax collected was only forty-four point three million, which is actually less than we collected in two thousand and twenty-two. And that is a very concerning trend.
And I'm just curious about those numbers. Under property tax on this sheet, it's, uh, we were expecting forty-six, two.
Right.
But what did, what did you say? Uh, you were, you didn't use that number when you said?
No, I didn't use that number. Forty-six, two had been the budget, and you'll recall that we always anticipate coming in a little bit less than the budget in property tax. Um, because we have to estimate and budget high in property tax to, due to the way the levy rules are, the laws about the levy. Um, but we had thought that we would bring in forty-five point seven million, and we actually collected forty-four point four million.
Do we know if that's more attributed to projections for new construction or some, uh, likely?
No, it doesn't have anything to do with new construction. Um, I see the Commissioner, I mean, he has got her hand up, but if you'll wait just a moment.
I'd like to hear the answer to that question.
I'm sorry, what?
I want to hear the answer to Rob's question.
Um, so Nicole and I looked at it last night and tried to figure out what happened, and we looked at the trend over the year, and we saw that, um, it pretty much matched almost month for month, uh, what we collected last year or the, the year before in two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, but, and so when we looked at it, uh, there are three things that we think contributed to that. Uh, you may recall that, um, two thousand and twenty-three was the year that the assessor increased property values um, by like twenty percent or twenty-six percent. It was that outrageous, um, outrageously high jump in property values. That caused a large amount of the increase in property tax to get, um, diverted, if you will, to developmental disabilities and veterans because their rate is fixed. Um, so a lot of the money, and this is why we keep proposing this legislation, to get them out of the general fund. Most of our one percent plus new construction increase went to those two funds. Um, so that was one thing. The second thing that happened is refunds were abnormally high last year. We got a notice from the Treasurer's Office at the end of the year that had a huge list of refunds to the tune of about, about half a million dollars. So that was a large hit on our property tax revenue. And then the third thing was, um, there, there was a third thing that we took in good that I kept. The two big things, though, were the, um, two dedicated funds that come off the top and the refunds.
Would the third thing have been the change in the, um, policy pieces for the?
The exemptions. We think the, you've heard the assessor talk about the senior exemptions that went into effect last year. We think that that also had, uh, impact on the amount that we collected. So it's, it's, the, there is another thing. Um, and that is the, in this year, we were stepping down. In two thousand and twenty-three was the next step down uh, in the money that was diverted to the road fund. That was planned, um, but we think that that also contributed. But to see the, um, property tax revenue come in at, you know, just slightly less than the year before, um, that was a big surprise when we were looking at it yesterday. So, um, ultimately, as Nicole was saying, revenue came in, um, at, once we closed, revenue came in at just under a million higher than we anticipated. Part of that was the, um, I think part of the, of the ARPA shifts and some unanticipated revenues. Um, but that wasn't the big reason that our fund balance closed at almost four million more. The big reason is that the reversions, um, we had anticipated, based on reports from offices and departments, we'd anticipated reversions of five point seven million, and the actual reversions were almost nine million dollars.
Was that because of openings in F T E positions?
I'm sure that that had to do in part with the vacancy savings tend to be the, um, highest reason for the reversions. But when you look at the report that Nicole provided you on the flip side, um, there is a list by office of how much each office reverted. The, um, coroner, well, starting off the bat, the clerk, the auditor reverted, um, three hundred and fifty-two thousand. Clerk reverted seven hundred and two thousand. That's a lot. Um, the Commissioner's Office reverted three hundred and nine. That is in part due to vacancies. Um, the coroner reverted two hundred and three. Remember, the coroner was coming and telling you he needed so much more money. He didn't, he, he closed at the end, uh, with two hundred thousand to spare. District Court is reverting three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, emergency services, they did not expend all their grant money, so they're reverting what they didn't spend, four hundred and twenty-one. Human resources, three hundred and seventy-four. Uh, juvenile courts reverting a little under a million dollars. Uh, non-departmental, one point five. That's a million more than I had estimated. And that million dollars is a transfer that we would have made to the rainy day fund, but the board directed me to, uh, not make that transfer this year, so there's a million dollars. Four hundred thousand from planning. That's grant money that they didn't spend. Uh, prosecuting attorney is reverting six hundred and nine thousand. He has many, many vacancies you've heard about. Um, public defense, five hundred and fifty thousand. Um, Public Works. Uh, this one's a little surprising, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Remember, the Public Works General Fund is mainly for parks. Um, the sheriff, uh, for law enforcement is reverting five hundred and forty-six thousand and four corrections. Uh, seven hundred and sixty thousand, that's all vacancy savings I would venture. Uh, Superior Court, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand. These are big numbers. These are big reversion numbers. Um, so that was surprising in that they were not estimating this high.
Like, on any year, like, out of all years, this is a large number, is what you're saying?
So you can see on this spreadsheet, uh, one of the things that we include about halfway through the page is what was your general fund budget for expenditures and how much countywide was reverted. So we've had some pretty substantial reversion years. In two thousand and twenty-two, offices and departments reverted ten million dollars. Uh, in two thousand and twenty-three, they're reverting just under nine million dollars. We also have the, um, what percent, uh, of reversion, that is, that's on this page. Um, but...
That represents what percentage of their total budget that would be?
Right, that was being reverted, and overall, the reversion is at six point eight percent this, for two thousand and twenty-three. Um, but you see, in the, in our past, the reversion was around three percent, pretty, uh, routinely, right around three percent. In the past few years, since COVID, the reversion has been substantially higher.
Yeah.
Um, that is something that, as you develop your budget, you should be looking at the amount that offices and departments are reverting because basically what this says is we're sitting on nine million dollars that you could be using. Um, it's, it's good that you have this fund balance because, this is the good part of the story, is when you look at the graph, um, at the time you passed the budget, the board agreed to an ending fund balance that was right at the two-month mark in, uh, at the end of two thousand and twenty-five and willing to play out to see what happened in the future years. But now with that ending fund balance, you see, that's another like four million dollars sitting in the fund balance and the general fund, and it just brings all the bars up by four million dollars. So the out years don't look as bad right now.
Commissioner Mahia, you had your hand up for a while.
I'm so sorry.
Couldn't find a break to get you in.
It's, it's really good conversation. I guess I'll take it back to the property tax conversation. Um, so is this a trend that we can expect with property tax where it's at that level now?
So we don't anticipate that. The reason for the main decrease from the year over is because of the high increase in property values. We did not see that in two thousand and twenty-four and we don't anticipate that big shift year, um, in twenty-five or twenty-six. So as long as there's not a huge increase in those property values, we don't.
The refunds. The refunds were normally high.
And mostly that has to do with the inflation factor that drove those prices up. No, the property value changes.
Yeah. Well, we saw right away this year was more in the normal.
Yeah.
Increase range.
But there was a heck of a spike there.
Yeah, to answer your question more fully, the refunds, they did impact it. If we do see more senior exemptions, because that's part of the refunds, we could anticipate a huge refund again, that is to collect it the following year. So there should be like a net change, right? So you're not saying you're going to collect it in this year. We're saying we're going to collect it in the following year or it gets reappropriated. So there should be a net impact to the refunds.
Right, the other thing that you've done now is you're not going to see that this year, um, because of the huge increase in the levy shift from the road fund. So it's going to look like property tax went up a lot. Um, but if we take out all of the shifting that we're doing, if you will, um, then we could get a more realistic look at what is the trend looking like. So that's something that we could bring in a future report.
Uh, I have a question that's kind of off topic, but I, I want to wait till we're. Is there more we're going through on the general fund?
Nope, I mean, we would go into the new year.
Let's look at the sales tax trend because that's one of the things that, um, uh, you were hearing from others during the budget process is, oh no, everything's fine. But what we're seeing and what, uh, Nicole's about to report on is we're continuing to see the revenue is flat. That trend is what's continuing.
So there are three sales tax reports in your packet. The first one is for December and so that's the closeout two thousand and twenty-three. And so what this report is saying that from December two thousand and twenty-two to December two thousand and twenty-three in the month, there was a negative five percent growth. But overall from the year from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three, we see that we closed the year with an increase of one point five percent above the year before collected in general fund sales tax.
You, you can tell the year. It's, it's in this sentence in the center of the, it's a little hard to find, but.
I have three different sheets.
Yes, you do. So December, January.
Okay, perfect.
February.
We'll make that more bold in the future.
Thank you.
Even if you had a page number on, you should refer to.
That as well, sir. Yeah, so that's what this report is. I mean, not to, what we see though is, um, that construction was down about eleven percent um, year over year. That attributed greatly to this decrease, um, or this flattening of year over year change. Our top ten categories are retail trade or just say our top three, right? Retail trade, construction, and then accommodations for food and services. So the impact of those three, um, sales categories really impact your general, your, uh, sales tax collection. So if you have changes in retail trade or construction industry, then you're going to see, um, that impacting the overall for your general fund sales tax collections. And so that's what we see at construction being down eleven percent. Um, what impacted and made that a flat for December, ending out the year of two thousand and twenty-three. So then, if there are any questions, I can move into the new year for two thousand and twenty-four. Um, because we use that trend, what was happening in two thousand and twenty-three to base our, uh, projections for the next biennium, right, for twenty-four and twenty-five. And what we're seeing in twenty-four and twenty-five, I mean, in twenty-four, starting in January is that, okay, we did see that the year-over-year growth starting out the year was at five percent above what it was before. But then you turn around to February and we're down, um, twenty-eight, two percent, right? So it's evening out to around two percent just in February alone.
And two percent is what we budgeted.
What we budgeted. So we're not seeing a change in our, to make us change our forecast or predict us to, to increase the general fund sales tax collections. They are coming in as predicted, but we'll continue to monitor it and see what's going on in that different industries are impacting it. But right now we're at two percent.
So that would suggest that the the magnitude of cuts that we did or whatever, we're not, you know, or.
We weren't going overboard, if you will.
Going overboard anyway.
Yeah, it was not a.
Projection of where, of the prediction that caused us to react in that way.
Yes.
Not yet. We're not seeing any, any real reason that you would have changed, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's the sales tax collections, so through February, uh, we will, yep.
How does this all fit with REIT is going to be way down. Uh, your homes that aren't selling are going to be remodeling instead of building new homes. Remodeling, uh, the expenditure takes place in the municipal area, lumberyards and such. Uh, so you're going to have a continuing slip for another couple of years, it looks like.
So we, we don't have REIT with us today. That will be available. We'll make that available with the next, uh, budget report. Um, we're talking in REIT. Um, this, I do believe the sales tax projection, um, it's tracking to pretty much where we thought it would be. Um, and REIT's up next for review. So, you know, we brought the predict, projections in the budget. We brought the REIT projections way down. And I think that this year, we predicted that REIT revenue would decline.
Yes, we did.
Yep, so we didn't predict growth in REIT this year at all. And we'll need to check and see just where that is trending.
But on that topic, did we cover, we had that issue of the negative fund balance? Is that all taken care of?
We did the transaction, so we needed to, to bring it into the black. Um, so it is, uh, the fund is not in the red right now and we cleared out, uh, with your approval in this budget for this year, uh, we cleared out everything except for bond payments. So we think that we're going to have enough revenue to make the bond payments. We're watching it, we, we will be watching it very carefully.
Is any of this going to be adjusted through the audit process when it's finally done? Is that being impact, going to impact the way we do business on some of this?
No. No, the, uh, paying the bond payments out of REIT is absolutely not being questioned by the auditor.
The whole thing, whether it's bidding, whether it's, whatever we're doing, any of our business practices that we've done, are they also going to be curtailed possibly to where we have a little more of an impact because we make this change or that change according to the audit issues?
There's nothing to curtail because nothing that's being addressed there isn't something we're doing in the future.
You know, I don't know that. I, I mean, I, you, you guys probably know.
We are continuing conversations with the auditor.
But I'm just saying, whether, however they land, they really don't impact anything we're doing in the future. It's more about, oh, shoot, okay.
Shouldn't have done this or that.
Yeah, we can do that better if we ever, if it ever comes up again.
But I thought maybe they'd be telling us, but you can't, and you can't do this.
Yeah, it's not, I, I haven't heard anything of that nature.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Um, I guess for the future, a couple of things I would like to see, oh, especially as we go into the budget amendment process. Um, I would like to see this with the level of cuts that we did. Um, and, and that comparison. Um, and then I would also like to see, um, which wasn't included this time, but it's included in, uh, it was included in the budget process, which is the, I think the ten-year reversion for each office. That is usually very helpful to see where, where the reversion has been for every office throughout the past ten years, throughout the past ten years. Um, and then I, just looking at these numbers again, it just makes me go back to having a vacancy policy in Thurston County. And I really do think we need to talk about that seriously during our budget amendment process. Uh, if we're tightening the belt and just with these reversion rates as well, I think we just really need to, there's a position that cannot, hasn't been filled for past.
Big position, we'll see.
Two years and it, it just. Why are we expending that, that fund, those funds when they could be used for something else?
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll work on that.
How do reversions, you know, I always think about money being different colors and going into different buckets and sometimes it can't mix and, uh, reversions and then the no supplanting and public safety sale, you know, like, you know, you don't use all that money that comes in for this and then it reverts back. Is that an issue?
So, so that would be an issue because basically the rules around supplanting is that if the county has committed a certain amount of money, that you can't drop below that committed amount. And the, going forward, right, that it's a point in time where you set the bar. Um, and then you can't provide anything less than that. And the Board has chosen to set that bar at the two thousand and twenty-three appropriated amount um, for the Sheriff, the Prosecutor, Criminal and the Public Defense. Um, so for those three departments, what you'll see in the upcoming, uh, budget amendment is that we'll, um, transfer to the new fund that fixed amount. Now, there's not going to be any reversion anymore from those three for the general fund. That amount is what's set. The conversation that we want to have with you is how much more are you going to transfer to the new fund to support the spending in those three offices? Um, uh, uh, that amount, you might take into account how much they may have reverted. But what you can't do less than is the two thousand and twenty-three appropriation.
Just with rising costs, you're never going to hit that floor again.
That's.
Okay.
Inflation will eat that up right off the bat.
But, but the original question, if I understood it, is like, if the, I mean, I'm not even looking at the paper, so it's theoretical. If the Sheriff reverted ten percent of its budget, is that the amount we can't go below, the expenditure? Or is it that we committed it, whether he spent it or not, we have to keep committing it?
I think that we need to keep committing a specific amount. Now, I, I do believe.
If they reverted ten percent every year, we'd have to keep budgeting the ten percent more every year.
I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying that the, if, so for example, in two thousand and twenty-three, the appropriation for the Sheriff, uh, Law Enforcement, it, it's, uh, these are in alphabetical order, so it's about two-thirds of the way down the page, was twenty-six million, four hundred and ten thousand. That's how much you're committed to every year in the future, no matter what. Twenty-six million dollars. Um, now you can choose to do more than that, but more does not commit you to always doing more. You're committed to twenty-six point four million.
Saying though, if he's spending, let's say he spends twenty-four million of that. The rest of it sits in the new fund.
Right.
And we still, the next year, have to give twenty-six million over.
That's right.
And then if he spills twenty, spends twenty-four million, the two millions.
He needs to, he needs to spend the twenty-six million first.
I get that, that's why we, that's why this is all sensible, but I thought your question was just about, like, the connection is not, it's about the expenditure, the final expenditure tally, it's about the, the Board's commitment. Budgeting.
That's right.
It, with no, with no connection in theory.
Any longer.
Uh, of it, of it having to be matched to expenditure.
That's right. And, and you.
Which is an interesting.
This is the beauty of transferring it. We don't have to track, did he spend his home twenty-six million in the general fund? It'll be transferred to him, it'll be available to him. We can show in any audit that the Board met their, um, maintenance of, well, effort level and there was no supplanting. And then in the new fund, basically, they should, um, be spending the general fund first and then spend the revenue, but their overall expenditures will always be more than twenty-six million.
But the net, tell me if I got this right, the net effect of that is that the Sheriff's Office will now be in a special position unlike any other department where their reversion will go back to benefit them.
Them.
Versus the auditor reverts, it goes back to general fund, she may never see that money again.
That's true.
Because we could redistribute that out to other needs, whereas the Sheriff's reversion will always go right back to the Sheriff's, um.
And probably the prosecutor.
And the prosecutor, criminal, criminal and public defense.
Because there's no reversion back to the general fund. It'll, whatever he reverts will stay in the law enforcement dedicated fund for future use for law enforcement. It couldn't be taken over and used for Assessor.
If the twenty, if that base level is twenty-six million and we're giving thirty million, you, and, you know, he reverts back two million, that, what, what came out of the general fund would go back to the general.
No, it'll never come back to the general fund.
Inflation will eat it up.
You're gonna and.
That's the bottom line.
And.
And why is that?
The, the, anything, if, so twenty-six million, let's say you appropriate thirty million to the Sheriff, right?
Yeah.
It'll be twenty-six million plus four million from the new fund. And he only spends twenty-eight million. He will have spent twenty-six million in general fund plus new, new money, the public safety sales tax, two million, and the leftover will be public safety sales tax that stays in that fund.
And you're saying inflation will eat it all up, but.
Because of the commitment to non-supplanting.
And you, and inflation will eat it all up, but it's not eating it all up. We have historic reversion.
Because we haven't been able to hire. That's the bottom line.
I'm saying, I'm saying, you're saying, I mean, it could be any number of things. I mean, if, you don't know the future.
I don't understand why you're saying the first money he spends is the general fund money.
I'm pretty confident, that's what's going to happen.
Twenty-six million now, every year for the Sheriff, you have to spend at least, uh, where are they? Public Defense, eight point seven million on Public Defense. And for the Prosecutor, however much of this eleven point seven million is criminal, that's how much they're going to get every year from here on out because the Board committed to non-supplanting.
Best thing we ever could have done.
Non-supplanting is a point in time cannot drop below.
Sarcasm?
No, 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 I've been trying to get this done.
It wouldn't have passed thirty-seven years.
It would not have passed without the non-sup.
Without agreeing to that, that money wouldn't exist.
The Sheriff would not have supported the measure without the non-supplanting commitment. But this is where it puts you. This is what I'm saying. It's a point in time.
Trying to wrap my head around this angle of the issue.
So like, I mean, cause, you know, in the weird, you know, it's different from the different departments now, but, you know, and then this could be an argument in any department, but it creates an incentive, I guess, to be, you know, if, if you know you're going to get the benefit of all the savings from the next year, it gives you a greater incentive to make those savings.
Well.
Right?
Um.
Cause usually they're like.
Not necessarily, would you rather have money in the bank? Or would you rather have enough FTEs and staff on board to provide the services?
That's right.
That the citizens demand of you? I, I, they could have filled the positions they would have.
So do these.
I, can I, I think we're like thinking about this as a fund that, you know, we are still setting an amount for the Sheriff to spend or the Prosecutor to spend or Public Defense to spend. If they spend less than that and there's maybe a request from that year, it's going to come from that fund. And so I feel like in the long term, this is helping the, the Board, whether he's, their savings or not, it's, it, it's just going to allow us that flexibility in the future when there is a request for additional positions and we're looking at, you know, it's. You know, it's like, oh, well, you know, every year you're only spending 28 and so there's been this $2 million in. And prop line funding, uh, it can come from, from that.
I see you have a question, but I'd like to address your, wouldn't an incentive be in place if you thought you were going to get the benefit? The state of Washington has a, a, a savings incentive built into the budget. It was implemented and I went to OFM in 2000, so. Uh, it was implemented in 1997 or 1998 under Governor Locke. And for, so I saw 15 years almost of the effect of that incentive and. State agencies didn't revert any more under the savings plan than they did in prior years. They, they didn't believe that they were going to get that money back with the times that they got it, they didn't spend it. Um, it, it was, it was not terribly effective. Uh, I tried to implement something like that here at the county about 10 years ago. Um, we don't have a adequate. Uh, tracking in our current financial system to really make it work. But the only department that was really interested in it was the sheriff. But they don't spend all their money anyway and it's really because of vacancies. And you will recall that we did the analysis about what, where are these reversions coming from? Vacancy savings. So like, you know, is it an incentive? Maybe. I didn't see it being effective at the state.
Those three funds that are affected by that no supplanting clause. Are they or should they be set up as like standalone funds?
They are.
They are. We established two new funds, uh, one for the sheriff and one for the prosecutor, public defense. So there are new funds. That's why I'm saying we'll transfer the general fund money there. It's out of the general fund. You don't need to. Think about it again, if you will, we'll monitor it, but it is going to be a very interesting new.
Yeah.
Uh, process.
I'm just trying to think it. I'm not saying right or wrong. I'm just trying to think it through because it's different and it's new and I, I haven't. There, there are angles of it I hadn't quite, you know, gotten my brain around.
The way I look at it, it forces us to do the right thing all the time.
Could you do inter-fund loans? From like if Sheriff's Department all of a sudden has 20 million dollars sitting in there, can you loan out from that like utility?
Uh, we can talk about that in the future. Just, um, though for comparison. Nicole or Jennifer, uh, tell us how much is the 2025? General fund budget before we do the transfers or what did the board appropriate? For public defense in 2025 from the general fund?
Public defense.
Yes, please.
I need my Jeopardy music while I look this up.
It'll take us a minute.
About 9.2. Is that what you got? 9957? I got booted. Okay.
Okay, 9.2 million. So already you're above the 8.7 that you're committed to in non-supplanting. In general fund.
Oh wait, I'm sorry, let me pull that back. I had two other funds in there. Double checking that number, looks too high. 8.4.
Eight four.
8.4, just the general fund.
So what are you telling me? I don't understand this number. 8.4 is what?
Public defense, general fund expense authority for 2025 is 8.4.
So that surprised me. I thought it'd be a little more.
Supplanting baseline in public defense.
I agree. Thank you.
Because we've increased that budget already.
Right, it includes COLAs and other decisions made during the budget process.
No, and I think ultimately most of what Commissioner Edward said is right, like we're not gonna. It's not really going to be an issue because the costs are going to continue to go up and.
Just the new caseload standards are gonna.
Yeah, caseloads.
The caseload standards are going to heat up everything for the bands.
But I'm just kinda, I was just wanting to tease around the theory I call. This construct that we've come up with.
Can I ask how it's going to work and so I get it how it works in the sheriffs. How's it going to work with the prosecutor and public defense because they're mixed into.
The board, like any other fund and, and this includes the sheriff too. It's not the sheriff's fund.
Oh, no, but I, I get that piece.
The board is going to have to decide how much the appropriation is for the sheriff and how much the appropriation is. For, not the sheriff, but the, um, yeah, public defense, how much is for prosecutor civil? And, uh, keep in mind how much the non-supplant. Bottom line is, but for any growth, you're going to have to decide that, just like you would any other fund.
So for prosecutor and reversion, for public defense reversion, it would just all go back to one pot. And then, so instead of going to the general fund, it would just be into this pot here. And let's say either the prosecutor or public defense came next year and asked for a higher appropriation of that.
That comes out of there, as long as it's not like ongoing expenses where you can't properly calculate in if you got that revenue in the future.
Right. And we'll be doing a forecast for you of those funds, just like we do for all the other funds.
So we tell you what the fund balance is, what the anticipated revenues are in that fund and then based on the request between the two departments, you'd decide which request you'd like to.
We can always add to the fund through the general fund transfer. They need more than what's.
That's exactly right.
But if it continues to be hard to hire people, those vacancy savings are all, are going to exist for quite a while and some of these funds are going to get. They can get very large and that could be a new thing.
That they will grow. Yeah.
I know one's going to get enormous.
I don't know about enormous.
I, it's going to be interesting.
Retention and recruitment change as we, uh, pay adequate salaries. That's going to be a big hit. It's never going to drop down. I mean, don't worry about that we're gonna, you know, that we're going to have more money in the fund than we know what to do with.
Not going to pile up.
Yeah, it's not. Retention and recruitment will eat everything up and that's inflation. That's the bottom line.
You can't use the money you save from one year to pay for salaries the next year.
You.
Good, but there won't, I don't think.
It's an ongoing impact.
It's just going to be continuous.
And that fund, you know, we're, we're going to need to get a few years under our belt to see what the trends look like. The first funds are going to land at a kind of a normal reversion rate like all the other funds do.
Okay, are we ready to wrap up? And we, we have a couple of topics to cover.
Um, I just, did you have a chance to show what the new year would look like with this increased fund balance? And I would say that's.
Well, that was this, right? We all looked at that.
So you're in a little better position than you were. Bottom line is you're in a little better position than you were at the time. You adopted the budget because the ending fund balance is higher this year, but revenue is coming in flat. Just like we thought it would.
And I believe it shows that you still don't get to your two, two month minimum fund balance, are you even with the increase?
Not by the end of 2026. We will for this, through this by any.
Yes.
So we can address that when we build in this by any budget. We can get ourselves there.
Yep.
If we build the budget in that. Okay, thank you so much. Next topic up is FJC control room. Okay, he was here.
He was here.
Around.
Thing is the big question is going to be how we.
You can take five. We don't have Ted, we need him. We need a 10.
Did you, did you say we're taking five?
Yeah, five minutes.
Now four.
You guys look like you're staying right there like.
We're back after a quick recess. We're picking up with item two, which is FJC control room discussion and we have team from juvenile court and central services and. Rick, I don't remember what your central services too, yeah. So we have leaders from these groups to kind of talk through this issue and should I turn it over to? Who's taking the lead? Robin?
I believe that Rick and Jason have the lead on this.
Okay, go ahead, guys. Good morning. So we briefed you guys a couple of weeks ago on the, the status of the system at the time. We were hoping for a miracle fix. We were able to source that part and it did not bring the system back.
What happened?
Nothing happened. No.
Just put it in there and it's like.
We, we got, yep, it was, it was almost like that. We got a blip for a minute. Um, and then everything just shut off again.
Yeah.
So.
Hello, I am sorry.
So, uh, we, we were excited when it started to come back, but that only lasted for about 10 seconds. And then everything went out. So, um, we troubleshoot it. At, at this point, we're spinning our wheels with the vendor. I didn't want to spend any more money with having them come up and try, you know, try to. Hope they could figure out some fix. So the system is. DOA, it is not working at all anymore. So we're here today to discuss it further with you and hopefully get some direction. Last time I spoke about a temporary fix, no, or not a temporary fix. A partial system replacement that would allow them to have some doors. And whatnot to function since they aren't using the whole facility. They're only, I believe, using two pods, correct Ted?
Two.
Versus replacing the whole system, which would be four. That cost is approximately $250,000. It is a system we could build upon. So if we, if the board decided to go that route, we would ask to go sole source on it. That way we could add on to the system as funding, if or when funding became available.
Can I ask questions? Okay, so if we were to do the 250,000 fix, right? Knowing that it's just going to be to a certain part, what would be the ultimate fix? Like would then, could we go back to where we're at again? Or how would it work?
Yes, we could. We could continue to add more P, PLC modules to it. As like I said, funding become available and have a full functioning system at some point.
Could I follow up on that? Yeah, so. But is there an initial expenditure that's a little more than those add-on pieces you might do later? So you're gonna, you're gonna get a Chevrolet, now you're gonna make it go faster and you're gonna get a different tire or whatever. I, I'm curious, you know, 200, 250 or whatever it's going to be, that's a lot. Does that get you? The main portion of it and then you talked about doing add-ons.
So you can't make a decision in this meeting because the public's not had an opportunity to comment on a decision that you may make?
Can I make a recommendation?
You can make a recommendation. We'll put the decision on Monday. It, I'm... The conversation should continue.
Yeah, I, I agree. So, and then, again, just a reminder to the board that we're also going to be making a federal request for this project as well. So I guess my recommendation would be to do the 250,000, seeing first of all, where we're gonna get the funding from, where it, that's gonna be a big part of the discussion. And then continue on with the avenue of making a federal request for it and waiting to see if we get the additional funding that we need to cover. I heard it's around 2 million this time, but I thought it was 2.5 the last time, so.
Well, this is my concern. We've not, this project, even at the 250, is gonna have to go to some type of a bid process. And we don't know what the bid's gonna come in once we start looking for the appropriate technology.
I, I don't know what the biggest crisis, there's a lot of crises, right? And there's all kinds of places that we need to be spending money. And I don't know what the number one one would be, but this is probably up there. You know, I, in my, you know, three months of here, this is probably top five, somewhere up there, maybe it's number one. But it's, it's important. The federal earmark request thing, I mean, that's a two, that's two years out, you know? That, that's, we're gonna have to fix this before then. And so like making that our earmark request, while we're probably gonna have to fix it before we get to the point where we ever get any money, I don't, you know, it would suck if that's what we're asking money for and then we, you know, look under all the couch cushions and fix this thing before that and then we don't get to take that money? I mean, is that, I, I think that, that's a thing that I'm concerned about.
I think the proposal is for the Band-Aid fix, if you will, to get us through and the federal earmark.
We're not even sure that's gonna get us where we need to be. If we spend that quarter million, that's not gonna fix this problem. This problem needs to be fixed.
Right.
And we just, I mean, it, it may be a little early, but we did just hear a presentation saying that, you know, we're under budget and, you know, we've got additional revenue that wasn't anticipated. At some point, we're gonna have to plan for that revenue that we didn't anticipate to have. And if this is on the top five, it would, you know, stand a reason that we could be thinking about using the money that we didn't anticipate having to fix this thing that needs to be fixed. And then this federal earmark, we should be thinking much more visionary, you know, something else.
So we, just to clarify the prior conversation, we don't have revenue that we weren't anticipating. The revenue is actually flat and right where we thought it would be.
We're gonna have money that we weren't anticipating.
People that, offices and departments that did not spend everything that was appropriated to them. So we do have a higher fund balance.
Yes.
This is a one-time project. It would not be inappropriate to take that one time under expenditure and devote it to this. That is an option that the board has. At the same time, if we do the minimal project while continuing to search for money for what the larger need is, we would have an opportunity to take and use that federal money and treat the first part of the project as match or, or show that the county's got skin in the game.
If that's truly the case with this technology, I don't want to do a situation, you know, like I've been told that this, yeah, that this software is, is unsupported, it's garbage, it was trashed 10 years ago. So if we put 250,000 into fixing the current system, instead of completely replacing a system, we would be throwing bad money after bad money, you know?
I, I agree. It's the proposal to just do some type of fix to the current system and not replace it.
Okay.
No, it's to, that's what I thought.
And phase in a new type of hardware and software, okay.
I'm thrilled, frankly, because that wasn't on the table last time we had this discussion. That we actually build toward, like versus, you know, that we were joking about the Ring camera idea. But basically, like, spending money on something that we know is gonna have no value to us when we actually have to replace is not, doesn't feel good. But to be able to spend money and on something that we can build on and help us get toward the final outcome feels a lot better.
And from my estimation, $250,000 is the slightest drop in the bucket you can imagine compared to something happening and the litigation that we would incur.
As long as that quarter million gets us a new thing to start building on and we can phase it in and it doesn't just...
Yes, it would. Like I said, we would most likely, most likely ask to go sole source moving forward, because there's only one or two vendors out there that provide that system. So that would be something we'd come back to the board for, most likely. We discussed that the other day.
And there's only one system that would meet the, the needs. See, at this stage, we need to go through the business requirements for something new, make sure that what we purchased meets our needs. Either that or go with the system that we're using countywide so that we're consistent in the systems that we have to maintain, which would lend itself to a sole source.
Isn't, isn't there some mechanism in place that for something this serious, we could declare some kind of an emergency to do something?
From the rainy day.
And make, make sure it comes from the rainy day fund. I don't care where it comes from.
No, this, this...
We need to, we need to fix this problem.
But if we can pull money out of, out of the, the, the balance or money...
A million dollars that I didn't deposit into the rainy day fund this year.
The money fund, the money solution is sitting here. All we need to decide, is it important enough to get the damn thing fixed and get it fixed now?
Rob?
I mean, just listening to the conversation, it would be helpful, I mean, to identify the, the business needs to make sure that works. But it almost seems like, I don't know if we can craft a bid going out for some way of, of the scalability, right? We're talking about these 30 outputs, which basically, if you're talking camera locks, so on and so forth, you're talking, I'm gonna simplify it, 10 doors. But we have the base minimum. What do we need to then bring fully operationally two pods? And then the remainder of the building, so that there is, there are three different decision points that can come back to the board and/or that, so that you know it's scalable. And if you pick a, a dollar amount to do, that you can then anticipate what it would be in the out.
But if we could go on a piggyback of something that's already out there or, and avoid the bid, that would make it just that much faster.
Do you have a suggestion on that? We, we have talked to the board actually several months ago about the funding for the system that's going in the jail.
Into the jail.
What would be ideal is for the system at the Family Juvenile Center to be the same. So we have consistency across the board. We're about 75% complete with the design for the jail. So we are at a point, if we wanted to slightly slow down that project, we could add this small part of the project we're talking about now to that project, have the same designer do the design so that it is all consistent across the board. And we could, I mean, we could literally build that into the construction bid as well. We could either have it be a, a part of the actual bid or we could have them bid that as an option, so we'd get competitive bids for it. And regardless of which system was selected by the contractor through bidding, it would be the same in both facilities.
That is ideal.
Yeah.
All right.
Can I just add, you know, talking to, basically stair stepping the process? And again, like, you know, outlaying, say, $250,000. My question would be, how many, how long are we gonna stair step that? And, you know, we're gonna go and go and go and then have to go back and start over again with the original program. They're complicated. Other people understand computers better than me, but I was part of a couple of building projects like this. And it's, these control systems are really complicated and getting them to communicate are really complicated. So we're looking at, you know, lock systems and camera systems and, and how it goes upstairs down to all these systems. But we also have, if we're talking stair stepping, we have perimeter doors that are open from the control room operationally. And then we have interior doors, and we'd have to find those doors. But we're still gonna be staff dependent on some of that movement and moving forward. So there's a staff expense to that. Just not asking for money, just putting it out there.
I just think we ought to say, time is of the essence and we, as a board, ought to prioritize and say, get this fixed as quick as you possibly can. This is on tape. Are we being, are we... Yeah, okay, that's fine.
I think we're doing that. I think that's what we're doing right now.
I, I wasn't good on 2 million, because I didn't think we had the ability. But a $250,000 investment that we can build on, I, I think we, you know, I can be comfortable with that.
Please don't fixate on 250,000. It's a rough estimate at this time. And once we talk to our, you know, go out to bid, and it might be more. It probably won't be 2 billion, but it might not be only 250,000.
Is there action we need to take to be able to piggyback on that, that bid that Rick was talking about with the...
Decision on Monday.
Okay.
As far as an action, I think what would be really prudent would be to allow us to go back, to, to go to the designer who's building or designing the jail system right now, amending their contract to allow them to then get with Ted and work through the details in regards to what do they need from a minimal perspective right now to be functional. And then they can do some preliminary design work. I feel pretty confident they could give us some relatively good budget numbers to work with. And then at that point, we can decide whether we need to scale it back further or if we have money to maybe even expand it. But I mean, that would be an approach where we could get some more technical information and feel pretty confident about it.
So to authorize him to do that, do we just give him the go-ahead? Or does that come from you, or is that, that's a decision point on Monday at a meeting, okay?
We can start the process right now. You know where we're at.
Nope, I need to wait for a formal decision on Monday.
I could be making phone calls and get things shaken up somehow. Let's not dilly-dally like a bunch of bureaucrats. Let's get this damn thing solved.
Let's, let's remain in accordance with state law where the public has an opportunity to comment.
You're darn right, I want to be in state law.
With the public having an opportunity to comment before you make a decision.
Okay, anything else we need to address today? Thank you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate your time today.
Could you find 20 minutes on my calendar to talk to me about this project?
Next up is 2024 Construction Project.
So that you know it's scalable and if you pick a a dollar amount to do, that you can then anticipate what it would be in the out.
But if we could go on a piggyback of something that's already out there or uh and avoid the bid, that would make it just that much faster.
Mm hmm. Duke have a suggestion on that. We we have talked to the board actually several months ago about the funding for. System that's going in the jail.
Into the jail.
What would be ideal is for the system at the family juvenile center to be the same, so we have consistency across the board. We're about seventy-five percent complete with the design for the jail. Um, so we are at a point, if we wanted to slightly slow down that project, we could add. This small part of the project we're talking about now to that project, have the same designer. Do the design so that it is all consistent across the board and we could, uh, I mean, we could literally. Build that into the construction bid as well. We could either have it be a a part of. The actual bid or we could have them bid that as an option, so we'd get competitive bids for it. And regardless of which system was selected by the contractor through bidding, it would be the same in both facilities.
That is ideal.
Yeah.
Alright.
Can I just add, you know, talking to um basically stair stepping the process and again like, you know, outlaying say two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. My question will be how many, how long are we gonna stair step that and? You know, we're gonna go and go and go and then have to go back and start over again with the original program. They're complicated. Other people can um understand computers better than me, but I was part of a couple of building projects like this. And it's these control systems are really complicated and getting them to communicate are really complicated, so we're looking at. You know, lock systems and camera systems and and how it goes upstairs down to all these systems. But we also have, um, if we're talking stair stepping, uh, we have per- perimeter doors. That are open from the control room operationally. And then we have interior doors and we'd have to find those doors, but we're still gonna be staff dependent on some of that movement and moving forward. So. The there's a staff expense to that. Just not asking for money, just putting it out there.
I just think we ought to say time is of the essence and we as a board ought to prioritize. And say, get this fixed as quick as you possibly can. This is on tape, are we being, are we?
This is.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
I think we're doing that. I think that's what we're doing right now.
I I wasn't good on two million because I didn't think we had the ability, but I a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment that that we can build on. I I think we, you know, I can be comfortable with that.
Please don't fixate on two hundred and fifty thousand. It's a rough estimate at this time and once we. Talked to our, you know, go out to bid and it might be more. It probably won't be two billion, but it might not be only two hundred and fifty thousand.
Is there action we need to take to be able to piggyback on that that bid that Rick was talking about with the?
Um, decision on Monday.
Okay.
Yeah.
As far as an action, I think what would be really prudent would be to allow us to go back to. To go to the designer who's building or designing the jail system right now. Amending their contract to allow them to then get with Ted. And work through the details in regards to what do they need from a minimal perspective right now to be functional. Um, and then they can do some preliminary design work. I feel pretty confident they could give us some relatively good budget numbers to work with. And and then at that point, we can decide whether we need to scale it back further or if we have money to maybe even expand it. But I mean, that would be an approach where we could get some more technical information and feel pretty confident about it.
So to authorize him to do that, do we just give him the go ahead or does that come from you? Or is that that's a decision point on Monday at a meeting, okay?
We can start the process right now, you know where we're at.
Nope, I need to wait for a formal decision on Monday.
I could be making phone calls and get things shaken up somehow. Let's not dilly-dally like a bunch of bureaucrats. Let's get this damn thing solved.
Let's let's remain in accordance with state law where the public has an opportunity to comment.
You're darn right, I wanna be in state law.
With the public having an opportunity to comment before you make a decision.
Okay, anything else we need to address today? Thank you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate your time today.
Could you find twenty minutes on my calendar to talk to me about this project?
Next up is twenty twenty-four construction project. That's like Public Works team's coming in. Plenty of time.
Plenty of time.
We need to go plenty of time.
You're gonna fill it. This isn't a long presentation, so I hope you don't get too disappointed. Okay, you can run it.
Oh.
Are we?
Go ahead.
Alright. Are we live? Alright, we're live. Uh, thank you commissioners, my name's Matt Elsman, county engineer. Um, and I'm joined by Brian Meyer, who is uh the design engineering manager in Public Works. So twenty twenty-four is a busy construction year for Public Works. Already, uh, this year, the Board of County Commissioners has approved Public Works to proceed with advertisement for the. Yelm Highway Preservation Project, um, that extends from Rich Road to the Shales Western Trail. The Pacific Avenue Preservation Project, which extends from Carpenter Road to Union Mills Road. Uh, the Johnson Point and Hawks Prairie Roundabout, uh, the restroom replacement project along the Yelm Rainier. Training uh Rainier to nine O Trail, uh, next to Wilkowski Park in Rainier. We're also wrapping up construction of the Yelm Rainier to nine O Trail extension between Tenino and Crowder Road. Um, and we have a lot more to come, including the projects that we're gonna be updating you on today. The projects that we're gonna be updating you on today are unique from other upcoming projects and that they all involve road closures. We recognize that road closures are an inconvenience for everyone and we do everything we possibly can to avoid them. Uh, but these four projects um have unique circumstances that make it infeasible to avoid a road closure. Brian's going to provide an update on these projects and explain why a road closure is necessary. And then we'll discuss the formal road closure process at the conclusion of this presentation.
So um, the first of these projects is our Black Lake Belmore Bridge Approach Repair. Um, it's been a while since Matt and I have been here to talk about this. Uh, but we felt this would be a good opportunity to give you kind of where we are, what happened last year on this project, so. And just, you know, this is what this project is, just an idea reminder. So this project was to stabilize the bridge approaches that settled a couple feet on either side of the bridge. Um, we're gonna be doing this by removing the existing bridge approaches and installing five hundred and forty timber piles. To a depth of sixty-five to eighty feet deep. Um, this will help reduce the settlement and stabilize those soils. Last year, the board approved a a road closure to facilitate the construction. It didn't happen, there was some delays due to the co- for the contractor in acquiring the piles. Um, there is some shortage in these types, this type of pile that we're looking for. So they took this winter and secured their piles. Um, and they've been working on getting them prepared and ready to go in this summer. The, so we're gonna be coming back later this year in the spring to uh ask for redoing that road closure planning again during the summer when school's out.
How bad has that gotten over this past?
It 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 hasn't significantly deteriorated. It has mu- it has settled a little bit, but not a ton.
And I mean, you, I don't know if any of you have been out there, you can see by the guardrail how much the ground has settled, that guardrail used to be flat. It's now dropped, I mean, over the fifteen years, it's dropped a long ways. Um. Let me go to the next one. And just kind of reminder about the budget for this project, total project cost is three point seven million. Two and a half million is coming from REIT two funds, the rest is coming from the county road fund. This next project is the Green Cove Creek Fish Barrier Removal One. It's another project you've heard lots about the last year and a half, two years. Um, but as I remind you, this project started as an emergency repair when the existing five-foot diameter culvert failed.
That whole hill was taken out and that.
No, that's the graphic.
That's the, that's the rendering, so that whole hill went, wow!
Yeah, no, the actual five.
It's gonna happen.
It's gonna happen.
Yeah, the actual five-foot culverts in that top picture is where that person is.
And that's all filled dirt that was put in in like the twenties or something?
Yeah, sometime. When they put that culvert in, they filled in that ravine for the road.
That's gonna be cool. Sounds like we need to do a field visit.
Yes, I want it bad. Um, but back in twenty twenty-one, we had to slip line the culvert to repair it, so we didn't have a major failure. Uh, but part of that slip line, the permits required us to remove. Um, the culvert and make it a fish passable structure by the year, by the summer of twenty twenty-four. So, um, this new structure, like you can see, is gonna be a hundred and fifty-foot bridge, removing all the fill dirt that was put in there. Uh, many years ago, um, the project's it will is planned to begin construction July of twenty twenty-four. And will take about fifteen months to complete, so the plan is to remove all the fill, the culvert. And prep some of the rep, the work, there's a lot of work to go and remove that fill. Winter the, winter the whole project over and come in and build the bridge next year.
This is kind of a unique bridge for Thurston County in that the footings are actually gonna be, it's a big auger, it's a big uh shaft.
Drill shaft.
So they, like, what's the diameter of it?
They're like five foot.
Five-foot hole that goes down into the ground, you fill it full of rebar and concrete. And then this bridge, it's such a long bridge, it comes in three segments. So you can't bring a hundred and fifty-foot bridge through that neighborhood, so there's three segments. Then they put a cable through each one of those segments and pull it tight and that's how you, how it's called post tensioning. And that's how those three segments actually become one segment, so. What's that?
Yeah, just right off the shelf.
Yeah, Allen wrenches.
Avoid a mid-span.
This isn't from Yarnburg? Exactly. Um, because one of the things with uh fish and wildlife, they're always trying to get us to avoid putting piers within that channel. And so this allows us to create that longer span.
There's no funding pie chart for that one.
Uh, the next slide we'll have.
Yours truly wasn't quick enough.
Yeah, this one's a, I mean, there's six different funding sources for the nine point six million. Um, and we're continuing to look for additional to kind of offset some of the county's contributions into this. Uh, I think we've turned in another two grant requests for this project, um, we haven't heard back on those ones to kind of lessen that county's impact.
Are you getting any salmon?
Right.
For this?
Sa- oh, salmon funds?
Yeah.
Uh, there was one of these. Um, it's the salmon, SSWU, so it's like two hundred thousand dollars.
But why so, why such a puny amount for such a big project?
There isn't a whole lot for this type of work. Normally, when we apply for those grants, they're like fifty to sixty thousand dollars is what we're able to get for those, those grants from. Salmon Recovery Board and this. So there is the Brian Abbott, but this one, um, is that what we turned, just turned in was a Brian Abbott?
It was a, no, it was a Department of Ecology Stream Restoration Loan, which we think we're gonna be very competitive on, so.
But yeah, the, some of that salmon recovery, they're fifty, sixty thousand dollars, they're not a lot of money in them. And we've been putting them to like our Thompson Creek Project and some of these others, um, when we've been successful in getting those grants.
Can you, just so I understand all the acronyms, what is um CRF?
Uh, that's the county road fund.
Okay, and then what is SSWU? The the gray?
That's the, that's the federal um loan that we got through.
No, that's the Public Works Board Loan.
Public Works Board Loan, I I figured that one out.
Three point seven million.
It's a storm and surface water utility.
Oh, yeah, so that was actually, yeah, they're, they are playing towards our storm, the storm improvements, drainage improvements on this project.
And then, so then, then when you call utility, what is that? Like the green, half a million?
See, that's the utility, the storm water utility.
No, I, the utility is PUD.
Oh, yeah, so this one.
Surface water, storming. This is, surface water is the, is the gray on there. The green is the Thurston PUD. They have a water line that's going through there. And then, I was wrong, the the blue, which is the two point five, that is the federal grant that we got through, um. Uh, Representative Strickland's office.
Yeah, so the PUD, we're replacing the water line for the PUD and they're paying for all those costs to replace that water line.
They just got an eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant from Congresswoman Strickland.
Did they?
Yeah, it came out um on March eleventh that they got eight hundred and seventy-five thousand for Thurston PUD's water mainline relocation. Bring go cul- uh, bring culvert, so.
Commissioner Mejia may have just answered my question, because I was gonna ask, back when we first were evaluating options, the PUD was kind of squawking about. Some of the options, I don't remember, they weren't happy about their water line and how we were gonna manage that. And so I was wondering how that got fixed, but maybe it got fixed because they got funded for.
So one of the options was not to replace the bridge at all.
Right.
And so if we, if we removed all that fill and then didn't replace the bridge, what do you do with the water line? Um, with putting the bridge in, they have, they have the abilities to attach their water line to our bridge.
Okay.
I thought even that one was, they had some slight problem with.
Maybe they did.
But you guys worked it through, it sounds like.
Some.
They found the funding, originally, it sounds like now they're offsetting it with the uh federal.
Yeah, because they were like, even even under the the bridge option, they were like, well, this is gonna increase cost to our customers, because we don't have this. Funding to do this replacement and how are you gonna make us whole and all that? And that could be, because it's, um, I wasn't involved back then, but I'm guessing that it's more expensive to attach it to the bridge than just to dig a trench in the ground. Where if you just put a culvert back in and just had to dig a trench above the culvert, that probably is cheaper than attaching it to the bridge.
Yeah, they wanted to be compensated at one point, but yeah, okay, thanks.
It sounds like they've been made whole.
Um, our next project is Little Rock and Hundred and Thirteenth Bridge and Intersection Improvement Project. So this project is putting in a left turn lane from Little Rock Road onto Hundred and Thirteenth. Um, and also removing some trees and improving the site distance. This is one that we, it's a safety project. There, um, because we've had a lot of some rear end accidents, it improves the site distance. Uh, get some of those trees out of the way and that left turn lane will keep people going, moving while cars are waiting to take that left turn. Uh, with that though, we also are replacing the bridge, this, it's our L five bridge on Little Rock, we're replacing it with a forty-foot structure. Um, this bridge is similar to the L four bridge that failed back in twenty fourteen. And we had to close the road and replace that one. This is constructed the same time in nineteen twenty-four, it's a hundred years this year old bridge. Um, and yeah, so we'll be pulling it out and replacing it, it's nineteen fi- foot, and so we'll be putting in a forty-foot structure in its place. Um, the, so this one, a road closure, we're planning for. Um, probably about four, four months of a road closure, just to facilitate the removing of the bridge and then the replacement of the bridge.
And so the timing of this is that we'll probably do the intersection work at Hundred Thirteenth and Little Rock Road this year. Um, and that'll give um the contractor time to build the pre-cast girders so that they can install them. Have them ready to go by the wish, or by the time the fish window comes around next year. And at that point, that's when we'd need to close the road. Um, and so the detour on this would be the exact same detour that we used in twenty fourteen for the um. The salmon, the Salmon Creek Bridge Replacement, which is utilizing Ninety-third uh Case Road and then Hundred Thirteenth Avenue.
Yeah, total project cost of this one is three million, one point eight million from a federal grant, S, our Surface Transportation Board Grant. Um, and the rest coming from road fund and traffic impact fees. And this last one is a little different than some of our normal projects, this one's. Coming from our chip seal, so normally when we do chip seal and overlay, we replace culverts that are failing under the road prior to doing our chip seal and overlay. That way, we're not tearing up the road at a later time after we put down this brand-new surface. Um, so this year, the chip seal is planned for Waddle Creek. Um, there are three culverts on Waddle Creek that are failing, um, and need to be pulled out and replaced, so. As part of that, we're gonna remove tho- these culverts and uh replace them and there probably be about a month of total work for us. Um, and then replace those and do the chip seal over the top of it for the whole road.
Uh, I have a question, you, you, Brian, you said something about traffic impact fees.
Oh, on the previous slide, yeah.
Yeah, on the previous slide. Are traffic impact fees, is that a legal use of those to do maintenance work?
So the traffic impact fees are being utilized on the Little Rock and Hundred Thirteenth intersection because you, you can only use traffic impact fees. On projects that are adding capacity to the intersection.
And that is adding capacity.
Exactly, so you're, you're spot on. So like for this project where we're replacing culverts. You're not adding any traffic capacity, so those would be ineligible.
That bridge is bigger that you're putting in, so that adds capacity, is that what you're saying? The bridge is bigger, but at Little Rock Hundred Thirteenth, we're adding that left turn lane, um, and that is adding capacity, the left turn.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, this one, the work is expected to start in May and be wrapped up around sometime around the fourth of July. Uh, and this is a hundred percent coming from the road fund, this project.
And just to give a plug for our chip seal project, um, at next week's agenda setting, you're gonna be seeing us come. Uh, for the first time to discuss calling for seal bids for that project. We have fifty-seven miles of chip seal planned this year in the southwest portion of the county, so it's a bigger contractor's year.
Is that lane miles?
That's centerline miles.
Centerline, so both lanes?
Yep, yep. Great, it's a big project.
District four, living large. Seven miles, take all the credit for that.
You win this year, next year you'll lose, because uh with the chip seal project. We try to focus in on one part of the county, so our contractor's not driving all over the place. You lose efficiencies when you start driving from one end of the county to the other end of the county, so.
I went down a hundred and eighty-third and I saw that that's a listed project for you guys, it's brutal.
Yep.
So in in the timeline for addressing that is?
So, um, the timeline, that is gonna be part of our preservation project next year, so that's actually gonna get an overlay.
Okay.
So, and we also have a capital project that on Hundred and eighty-third that goes from State Route twelve to.
Sergeant.
Sergeant Road, and so on that portion of the road, we're gonna be adding shoulders and it's gonna be a true reconstruction project. Going from Sergeant Road to Old Highway ninety-nine, um, we'd like to do a capital project, but honestly, that road wouldn't make it long enough. To get to construction for a capital project, it needs fixed like sooner than later, so we need to do an overlay project on that. And so that'll be twenty twenty-five, that's next year's, as part of next year's overlay. Next year, we have an overlay planned on. That road and Marvin Road. Communication and outreach, probably the biggest part of doing a road closure that, um, it's the best thing that we could do. Um, there's a lot of advanced notification that goes out to stakeholders, including uh first responders, school districts. Utilities, businesses, post office, border mail carriers, property owners. Um, there's a lot of stakeholders that we need to reach out to, because there's a lot of people that use our roads to provide services to the community. More than people don't realize, it's not just the local homeowners, there's a lot of others that use these roadways. Um, so we, there's a lot of different things we do to get that message out, we utilize social media, we utilize press releases, we utilize. Um, posting signs on site, um, opportunities like we're doing today. Um, to present to the board where the public is, uh, can view the meeting. Um, there's a lot of different things that we try to do to get in front of these road closures, because. Postcards go out to them, uh, local residents, so. Um, yeah, that's a big effort on our part. So, next, I'm going to talk about the formal roadway closure procedure. And it is formal because it's dictated by state law, so there's not much deviation that can go on here. Um, first, we have to get permission from the legislative authority, which is the Board of County Commissioners for us. Um, usually we get permission for myself to set the the date and time for the closure. And we do this because this gives us more flexibility. and we do this because this gives us more flexibility to coordinate with the schedules of all the stakeholders that I've discussed, as well as the contractor. Specifically, in this, in this time where it's challenging to get materials, we wanna make sure that when we come around to do, setting up that road closure, we can actually build something when the road is closed, so, and that the contractor has all the materials prepared. Um, and then, uh, once we receive permission from the Board of County Commissioners, we're required to publish in Olympian, um, and then we use all the other communication methods that we discussed earlier as well. So with that, I know there's a lot of information about road closures. Um, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Keep up the good work.
So, so next steps. So next steps is, um, you want your, I guess you can have it back. Um, so next steps are that each one of the projects that Brian's discussed, obviously, we mentioned, requires a road closure. So we'll be coming back, um, to request permission from the Board of County Commissioners to close the roads. And usually, we'll do that in conjunction with the call for seal bids. So we'll be requesting the call for seal bids for all these projects, and at the same time, I hope I'm not speaking out of line.
No, you'll, you'll be seeing Waddle Creek shortly. It'll be for the call, well, that one will just be the road closure. Uh, but these other ones, uh, you'll see the call for seal bids and the road closure.
Process to get these projects out, and it's just one of the steps.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Commissioner Items. Anyone, anyone? What's that? I'll be sure, Items.
Okay, I, I have one. It seems like I'm hogging the show all the time.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Uh, this is something that Mr. Pettit sent in, apparently, today or yesterday. And it's, uh, from the Washington State Attorney General. Have you had an opportunity to look at, at this? I, I'm gonna ask counsel to give us a briefing on this. I mean, it is, I've been studying this issue for years, and I think we've got a, well, we could have a problem. Let's just let it go at that. Uh, if we don't follow this guidance, it's all kinds of land use issues, constitutional issues on land use. And it's, I'm just gonna say it's worth looking at. I mean, way too much to get into.
Avoiding unconstitutional takings of private property.
Yep, that's it.
And that's from the Attorney General's office?
Yes, September of twenty eighteen. I did not know this existed, or you would have been hearing a lot more from me about it. So, that's my issue for right now.
We can, uh, set that up during one of your upcoming work sessions.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, I'm, I don't know. Well, uh, there's no Tenino Chamber meeting today at noon. It's tonight at five thirty. If you all haven't caught wind of that, if you're planning on attending. And then I had mentioned last night wanting to talk about the Park Foundation M O A and kind of moving forward and, like, a, kind of something, an idea that I, I'm trying to, like, it is bubbling up. When would you like to have that conversation? On an agenda? Is there one upcoming, or?
You can add it to an upcoming work session, or we can make it part of the, uh, planning session conversation. You, you'll have time that day to talk about parks, park board, park advisory board.
Okay.
What you want the art and culture program to look like. It can be part of all of that.
Okay.
So next Tuesday.
Sounds good.
Okay, we're back at two P M. Is that correct?
Before we break, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the sheriff has asked for two work sessions coming up. Uh, one in particular next Tues- next Wednesday. I think it's next Wednesday afternoon. Um, on a product called.
Flock.
Flock, Flock Safety. And he has proposed, um, bringing in a team from the vendor that would do a presentation to the Board of County Commissioners. He's asking for ninety minutes, uh, for the vendor to do their demo. Um, we generally don't bring vendors before the board. He has not talked about this product with Sherri or the I T staff, and so my question to you is, um, would the board actually, we, we don't bring vendors before the board that you haven't asked to see, is our normal practice. So I'm asking the board, do you want to, um, dedicate an hour and a half of the board's time to this presentation?
Have we brought vendors even before the, I mean, I don't remember a vendor that we've brought on that is going to be doing a demo for us that we're not contracted with before.
On a product you haven't even heard about.
And I'm. I, I know what it is. I'm very familiar with it, and I think it's, I think it's worth spending time talking about and looking into. It's a pretty, and it's a pretty unique system, because it, it talks with all these other systems that are already in existence, and it kind of plugs us into this.
So I have concerns, just because, like, are we opening up a hornet's nest where then every other vendor is going to want a presentation in front of the board because we're allowing this vendor to come through? I mean, there's so many vendors that I've gotten reached out to, and, you know, I usually direct them to, you know, like, asking for a presentation in front of the board. And I mean, if, is this going to be any allowance that we're going to be doing? Is to allow vendors to come in and do demos for us? And my second concern is, has this gone through, like, the appropriate, like, route that it needs to go through? And so I just, I have some concerns there. Not saying that, you know, I, I'm not debating whether the system is good or not, but for me, it's like, are we following the appropriate process? And is the board going to be allowing vendors to come in and do presentations and demos, you know?
So what would be the alternative way to understand the product?
Can the sheriff come talk to us about it?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what I would.
Before you bring a vendor in?
Yeah, that seems to make more sense.
Yeah, the sheriff or his staff person that's up on this stuff.
I can tell you exactly what it is right now, and then you can decide if you want to.
Well, I'm curious. I, I'd like to know more about it myself.
It's a camera system that's made to identify vehicles and, and license plate numbers. And it's a camera system that, and it's called Flock, because it, 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 uh, interfaces with all these other systems. So, uh, if there's a burglary that occurs in, uh, Tanglewild, and, and you know what time this, this happened. So there, okay, in my neighborhood, this is what sold me on it, the two incidents. One, when Don Wands was burglarized, and they, they went in there, they broke out the window, they stole the safes, they stole a whole bunch of stuff, and all we knew was that there was a, like, a dark Volkswagen that, that did it. Otherwise, we had nothing. And so they were able to go into the Flock camera system, because there were other burglaries that occurred the same night down in Centrelia, and Centrelia has a great system. And they were just able to type in black Volkswagen between these dates. And that Flock camera system can identify the vehicle, license plate number, and had video of them, like, hiding behind a car wash, breaking open the safe that they had stolen from Don Wands, and just had them then, and, and them, and they were like the serial burglars up and down I five. And because of that, they were able to link them, like, seventeen other cases.
And they solved it.
Yeah, and then the, in my neighborhood, it, and this was, I thought this was interesting, you know? Everybody's got a Ring camera, but the Ring cameras, they don't tell you so, that much. So somebody had an e-bike stolen out of their garage in my neighborhood, and you were able to go to every Ring camera, and you were able to get this grainy photo of this Toyota pickup. That's it, that's all you get. And so that's frustrating. You put that out on the internet, and it's a million other cars. But if the Flock system was on, was strategically placed, like, on the exits of the, of the community, you'd be able to say, hey, we got this Toyota pickup, uh, between two A M. and three A M. patrolling this neighborhood. And the Flock camera system, you'd be able to get the, like, the, the license plate for that as it left, as it left town. So it's not like, it's not filming what people are doing, it's not filming what's going on around. It's able to identify vehicle license plates at, like, certain points. And it, then it's able to talk to Centrelia, Tumwater, Tenino, Pierce County, and, and it's, it's pretty slick.
Do the, do people use vehicle license plates? I thought every crook switched license plates before they do something stupid.
That part, I can't speak to. I can just tell you what the camera system does. And they're relatively, they're relatively cheap, so that, you know, the, the sheriff is looking for things that he can do to manage, uh, you know, responses without ha- being able to, to, to go chase criminals down.
I, I would like to have Sherri from I T. be there in this presentation, because my next thing is to Sherri even have capacity, because we've thrown a million projects her way, and. So I, I would like to.
This is all externally controlled.
But it would still have, I mean, whether we want it or not, it, I T. always comes into play in all of these situations.
And we just pay us for, like, a service?
Yep.
So we've had that type of pitch before, and as Sherri has, uh, reported to the board, the, many vendors say, we take care of everything, and that's never the case. It always has some type of impact on our staff or our systems, if not both. So I would just say again, the county has a process for procurement and for, uh, I T., and the sheriff has now followed it. Um, he is asking for this time regardless, and, you know, if it were a department head, I would be telling them to follow the county's procedures.
I think we need to do the same thing in this case. This isn't the first time that the process hasn't been followed, and I think we really need to stick to the process. It exists for a reason, and this continues to happen. I'd be open to having the sheriff come and talk to us about his needs, but bringing a vendor in before we've even heard that just seems like we're setting a precedent that we're gonna have to either follow or be accused of favoritism or be op- uh, open ourselves to some sort of liability, and I think we just need to follow the process.
I want to see the, I, I would like to see the sheriff come in here and tell us, I mean, what Wayne's explaining makes sense to me.
Very interesting product.
There's gotta be some room for as new products, as new technology, as new methods emerge, where, you know, we allow somebody to come in and, like, I, I'm not an expert on those things, but I'd like to have somebody sitting next to me that is able to explain it. So if there's still some way to allow, you know, our folks to come in and, and present something without just having to, you know, speak in layman terms.
Process that's farther down the process, we would not start there.
Trying to think of the closest analogy. The closest thing I can think of is the assessor and the Eagle View or whatever, and.
Uh, but even then, the assessor went through the entire process, working with I T.
Right, no, I'm just, we didn't, we never heard from the vendor directly.
And no, the net, the vendors never came before the board.
That was like new technology, flyover, is gonna help the needs of the office. We were being asked for an investment. We ended up making that investment. That's where we attracted discussion, but anyway, I, I don't really have a strong feeling. I, I see where Wayne's coming from. It's like, we, we gotta learn about stuff, and it's way more, to me, it's like, it's way better if we can all hear it at once, instead of hearing it five times, like, making it somebody, we have five separate meetings with five separate commissioners. So if it's just the sheriff coming in and giving the presentation, I, I, I don't know. I, I don't really have any opinion about this.
Well, I'd like to see the sheriff come in and give us that presentation.
What if he's saying, well, I'm not an expert in it, but I wanna find one? You know, you don't get to be innovative by creating red tape. And I, I understand you have to have process, but if there's something new and innovative and interesting, I also don't want to discourage people from bringing us information and ideas.
There's always something.
Our process, there's always something new.
Yeah, and we should hear it.
And our processes, you start with I T.
Yeah, I think we need to follow the process. I do feel pretty strongly.
I, I, I guess I'm gonna revert back to the camera system that we ended up with. We got it for free, and it's costing us millions of dollars.
Yeah.
And why did we get it for free? Other jurisdictions, uh, did or did not, and it's a mess.
I don't know what you're talking about.
The body cameras.
Body cameras.
We, we, we use, we, there was an allocation of money for, to, to deal with legislative changes, and we chose to use it to purchase our body camera system. We knew there was gonna.
We didn't bring the vendor in and listen to him beforehand. That's probably the problem.
Huh? Huh? Gotcha.
Well, no, well. You didn't. He didn't work through I T.
And he didn't work through I T.
He did not follow the process.
The sheriff talked to the vendor, and the vendor sold him on this whole thing, right?
He needed to follow the process.
I wanna do this, but I don't wanna get stuck again, like we did with the cameras. It was a, it's a big financial hit that's gonna go on for quite some time.
What I have concern, and I'll bring this with the body cameras, since Commissioner Manser has brought that up, where we're paying the price is, sure, the system is great and works great for the sheriff's office, but then how is that data transferred to the prosecutor, to public defense? And that's where the hiccups usually come, is because that information, right? It doesn't stop at the sheriff's office to go and, and, and catch, and then has to be transferred over to the prosecutor, and the prosecutor has to do all this edits and do all these cuts, and then it has to go to public defense.
So those nuanced questions would be great for an expert on the product to come in.
Which should be asked at your staff level before it ever comes to the board. Um, that's, and the body cameras, as an example, they're not working great for the sheriff. He has already said that he needs to replace them with the other.
What do you mean, not working great? It's a nightmare. Tell it the way they.
Yeah, yeah, that is pretty.
It's killing our budget.
It's awful, and it doesn't work.
So I'm going to say no to the vendor coming in next Wednesday, and I'm going to ask the sheriff to please follow county process and our normal procedures.
Like, he can, I, he's more than welcome to come talk to us about the product, right, and kind of the needs, but I, I've, my whole hiccup in this is that when, when we do these kind of investments in systems, there's no communication between anything else, right? Like, the prosecutor and public defense needs to be brought in, I T. needs to be brought in, because again, it's, we're looking at it at a very siloed approach and not at this holistic level, because it impacts more than one office or department when, when we do these kind of system upgrades. And then we end up, you know, having a two million dollar additional system request because we need to buy the upgrades that were not initially included in this whole thing. And it's happened way too many times, and I'm.
All right, thank you.
A good idea, though. I think we need to think out of the box and be looking at new technology at all times.
Probably a YouTube video. He can just show us on it. Let's have vendors.
I can have it online. It's easy to find.
Send us a link or something, because I don't know how to hook it up.
Robin, Robin can put it there.
She can do it for me, okay?
Okay, we're back at two P M., but we've reached the end of today's morning's agenda, so we're adjourned.